Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Madeira Beach Board Commissioners' Regular Meeting. Today is March 7th and the time is 6:00 PM. Commissioner Lister, will you please send this evening's invocation?
I will, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we are so excited that you're with us here tonight. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed on Madeira Beach, and we ask that you continue to do so. We ask that you give wisdom and guidance to the commissioners here seated tonight that will make a difference for the future of the city of Madeira Beach. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Daryl, would you please join us at the podium with the Madeira Beach Little League We would be honored this evening if these young group of young people would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I know you all have a game to play, so I was going to give you all a few minutes. I think you all had a small presentation or something you wanted to say before you all had a play ball this evening.
Sure. So, all of the participants, some of you may have been here a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about our opening ceremonies. We had our opening ceremonies on Saturday morning. We had 209 kids, 18 teams, which is almost four times as many kids as we had 14 months ago. A new twist. So, some of our board is taking on a district role, which means in 2018, we will host the Bay Bridge Softball State Ceremony here, which will put 300 of the 60 unique families, all staying at least four days, all eating in Madeira Beach, all staying in Madeira Beach, all basically being around. So, summer of 2018.
And I want to thank you. I want to thank you very much, you know, not only the parents and the coaches out there, but I want to, I really appreciate you all having me out there on the opening day. It was outstanding day. You couldn't ask for a better day for the beginning of Little League and softball. And, you know, I didn't choke, and it went super fastball, but I think we got the deal done, and I want to thank you very much again for what you all do. Ladies and gentlemen, those fields okay? They had the right size for you? That's what I want to say. And thank you very much for being with us this evening. And thank you for working. Madam C. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Commissioner Spildee?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. This time I'll entertain a motion for the provided minutes.
I saw a move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any additions or corrections? Madam C. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Thank you.
And before I ask for a motion on the agenda, I believe the city manager wants to make a statement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get to my short presentation, item number 2 under Presentations Proclaiming Pace Month, we would like that to be referred to the May meeting, so if we can get an approval on that. And then, I come before you tonight with kind of a bittersweet announcement, and I didn't know if I was going to announce it tonight or when, but we're losing one of the family, and he's always been very upfront with me, and I knew his career aspirations, but Vince Tenalia is leaving us. He resigned as of February 27th. I want to congratulate him. He's not going far. He's going down to, I think this is okay, Vince, to let him know where you're headed. He's going down to St. Pete Beach. He's, you know, he was very upfront with me when I hired him. He was groomed to be a city manager, and down there, he's got some room to grow, bigger budget, things of that sort, and he's always been kind of a one for a bigger challenge. And so, with that, I just wanted to say, you know, A, let you know that, B, congratulations, and he'll be missed. He was a model employee, and it's going to be hard to replace him. So, with that, though, I have to clarify a couple of things that I found out today because it frankly affects his resignation. He resigned. He found a better deal. He's bettering himself. It has nothing to do with the political games that are being played. But yesterday, the challenger in the mayoral race, the running mate in District 4, had a meeting with Vince, and frankly, they offered him my job due to my pending doom, I guess, in April, if the election goes one way or the other. So, you know, Vince handled that, I think, relatively well, but as my ethical behavior is being challenged, here they are, two people that have never spoken to me in their life pretty much or even had a conversation, at least professionally, went and asked an employee who they didn't know had resigned to take my job as I'm sitting down the hall. So, when they heard that, and maybe they didn't hear what they wanted to hear, the rumor then spurred into that Vince was terminated. And that's why I bring that up tonight. Vince was not terminated, and I'll talk to anybody that needs to hear that from St. Pete Beach or the press. Nothing should taint this young man's reputation. He's been a solid performer for us for years, got us out of a lot of holes. We were in a deep, deep trouble when we first started this, and Vince turned it around. And so, I just wanted to be very transparent with everybody that, you know, Vince was not let go or terminated, or there's some deal going on. He found a better deal, frankly, and advanced himself, frankly, and I'm happy for him. So, again, you know, it's unfortunate that we've gotten to this point, but again, when my ethical behavior is being questioned, I wonder if that was really appropriate or ethical as well. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, if you, you know, if everybody can say their goodbyes to Vince, he did give us more than a 30-day notice. I'm working with the attorney to establish a contract with him, so that whoever does replace him can use him as a resource. And, you know, we're sad to see him go, but life goes on too, so we'll have to figure it out. But he's going to be a part of that transition as well. So, I have to pat him on the back for that, because he didn't just pick up and go. He gave me more than 30 days, and we'll get a lot of work done, and frankly, a lot of work out of him before he goes. With that, Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Vince. And you know, Vince, I heard this last week also, and I know I had a chance to speak to you a little bit this evening, and I want to say thank you. I thought we lost you last year, because I know you had a couple of job offers. You're a young man. Your reputation is well-known in Pinellas County of your excellent work. You know, Madeira Beach being a smaller city, we understand that you've got to grow, and it's about, you know, making money and making a future. I'm sure you've got a family plan somewhere in your future. You're still a very young man, but congratulations and Godspeed and the best of luck from the city of Madeira Beach.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I am excited for you, Vince. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for you. You and I spoke a little bit earlier today, and the thing about it is, you didn't work yourself out of a job. You paid for yourself while you were here, in my mind. You really changed the policies and put policies in place that could be extended after you leave, and I think that was your actual goal, so that this city could take care of itself and take care of its debt and take care of its future obligations. And you've done that wonderfully, and I get a report every month from you, and I know exactly where our money's going, and I know exactly where it's been. So, again, I told you earlier today that I really appreciate you, and thank you for being here, and thank you for doing everything that you've done, and I wish you the best of luck in the future. And I know that you probably don't need it, but if you need a recommendation, you know, it'd be high for me. Thank you for all you've done, James.
I just wanted to say to you, Vince, that I always had a hard time understanding the budget when it came out, and since you were doing it, I mean, everything was so self-explanatory and so laid out perfectly, and it made a lot of sense. So, you're going to be missed. It's going to be very hard to replace, but I'll see you at the Y.
That's right.
And I agree with all of them. You've done an awesome job. You explained the budget to me as well, very thoroughly. Thank you, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thanks.
Vince, thank you once again. And before I actually...
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Vince. I'm sorry.
I wasn't really prepared to say anything tonight, but anyway, I appreciate all the kind words and everything, and I won't be far. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. And also, before we get started, I entertain a motion for the amended agenda. Dave Marsicano, and I'm just going to recognize you real quick, and I know you didn't, and I know you were part of the America to Cuba race, and I heard that you placed first overall?
Yes.
Congratulations. I noticed your beard probably got a little whiter on that trip down south, but ladies and gentlemen, I'm telling you, Dave Marsicano, besides being an excellent Marina manager, Public Works Manager, he's an accomplished sailor and has been so, and he's well-known in the state of Florida, and now you've brought recognition to Madeira Beach, and thank you very much for your outstanding job, and congratulations to you and your crew.
Thank you very much.
And with that, at this time, I will entertain a motion for the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from the commission? Is there any further comments from staff?
Conditions for approval, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Madam C. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Presentations and proclamations. First presentation by Ford Pinellas. I was expecting Commissioner Kennedy, so, okay.
Jim has been over our chairs. We now have Commissioner Maroni as our chair. But I'm Whit Blanton, and thank you for the time here, Mayor and Commissioners, to be here today.
Sorry if I can interrupt you. Can you speak into the mic so people can hear?
Sure. I'm the Executive Director of Ford Pinellas, and we are the merged organization that formerly was known as the Pinellas Planning Council and the Metropolitan Planning Organization. See, David Healy is here, my predecessor on the PPC. And I'm making the rounds to just talk to you a little bit about something that's going on regionally that I think you all need to know about. Transportation planning is something that we've had a lot of discussions in Tampa Bay about over the years, and it's certainly gotten a lot of attention in the last year, really, in terms of how we better optimize and make better regional transportation decisions. The Tampa Bay Times has had a number of editorials on the subject, and we've now had the state legislature taking a keen interest in looking at ways to streamline and create a better regional decision-making process. And just a little bit of background, we are the designated agency that helps communities within Pinellas County and the county as a whole set priorities for transportation funding decisions, from gas tax dollars and other sources of revenue that come from Washington, DC, and Tallahassee to our region. We are in one urbanized area with two other metropolitan planning organizations. One is Hillsborough County and one is Pasco County, and there's a move afoot by many on the county commission, on both sides of the bay, and in the state legislature to merge those MPOs into one organization that would speak with one regional voice to provide a little more clout and a little more weight of authority to bring home more dollars for transportation projects in our region. And on the face of it, I think that's a wise move, and it makes a lot of sense, because we do have a fragmented decision-making process when it comes to how we deal with cross-bay issues, how we deal with inter-county transportation, because there are a number of players involved. We also have a number of transit agencies, and so, there was a bill filed on Monday in the Senate and in the House to not merge the transit agencies, but to create a reconstituted umbrella organization that would be the recipient of federal funding and guide decisions that each of those transit agencies, PSTA in our case, make. So, I just wanted to talk to you briefly about that, because we are kicking off a process over the next year to really look at best practices and ways to take knowledge from around the country and apply it to the culture and character of Tampa Bay, so that we can make the best decision and recommendation for how we make those decisions in the future. We are starting on May 12th at the St. Pete College epicenter in Mid-County to have a workshop. All elected officials are being invited to that to set some objectives and guiding principles for how we look at making regional transportation decisions in Tampa Bay. Then, over the next six to nine months, FDOT has provided some funding for us to look at places like the Seattle region, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Phoenix, and other places around the country that have done a good job in developing a regional transportation network. And it's not just highways. It's not just water taxis and things like that, but it's also good public transportation, good bicycle networks, and things like that. And there are a lot of good lessons to learn. We are expecting that by sometime in early 2018, we will take the recommendations from that research and bring it back to this community, have another workshop, and develop some recommendations to present to the governor and the legislature about how we do transportation planning in this region. And it's a little challenging to just say how many counties are in your MPO, because we're a little more complex than that. We have a special act of the Florida Legislature that created the Pinellas Planning Council, so we provide grant assistance, technical assistance, and support for a county-wide plan here in Pinellas County. And I think that's important because of our 24 local municipalities plus the county. In Hillsborough County and Pasco County, it's very different. They're not in a redevelopment mode quite as much as we are. They have a lot of greenfield development that's happening, and 900,000 people in Hillsborough County live in unincorporated Hillsborough County. So, it's a different dynamic, and I think however we go forward, I'm urging that we keep a process in place, so that we have an organization that looks out for the interests of all the cities and coordinates planning ordinances, planning rules, planning guidance that makes it more consistent and easier to navigate if you are looking to do business in Pinellas County, and that's the role that we filled. On the transportation side, I also think that there's a lot of inter-agency coordination that needs to happen in our county that's different in order to facilitate quality redevelopment in the right locations. So, I bring this to your attention to invite you all to participate, to stay involved in this process, and to let you know that we are still focused very much on enhancing beach community access, particularly along Gulf Boulevard, to improve safety and accessibility, and we've got a number of things in the works for that, including working with the Florida Department of Transportation to ensure that we have safe treatments for bicycle lanes on Gulf Boulevard. They're in the process now of marking those with green paint and better marking and better signage to improve visibility, and that's just one step of our strategy to reduce fatalities and injuries for both pedestrians and bicyclists, which unfortunately, we lead the state among large urban counties in the rate of pedestrian fatalities and injuries and bicycle injuries. And I will tell you, just three weeks ago, I was a victim of one of those bicycle crashes, and I'm lucky that I didn't have much more than a few bruises, but I was doing everything right, riding on a trail, and we had a vision problem with an obstruction of fence and bushes, and a car came out, and I went flying over the hood and landed on the pavement, and it could have been a lot worse. But I may be the only MPO director that identified a problem on Monday, and by Friday, we had the solution on the ground when the city of Clearwater went out and striped that driveway. So, we like to think we can move fast, but I hate to spill blood to make that happen. But I just want to let you know that I'm here to work with you all on any issues that you have in the city of Madeira Beach, and we'll keep you posted on the developments at the regional scale, and again, I encourage you to be involved. If you have any questions of me at this time, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
And I think you know where, and I came out with this in the discussion at the Big C meeting, you know, and there's a lot of people thinking that they're worried about Hillsborough County kind of gobbling up Pinellas County when it comes to transportation, those transportation dollars coming out. Is the bigger county going to be able to take all that money and not let for Pinellas? I mean, we know there's a couple of municipalities in Pinellas County that really, let's say, don't put in the same share that everybody else does when it comes to public transportation or PSTA.
Right.
And we know that the county's a little lacking in public transportation, but I have to go ahead and say kudos how you all have aggressively and working with waterborne transportation, trying to move that forward. So, I mean, looking at some of those things, what do you see that we can do to make sure that we don't turn into Hillsborough County West?
That's a good question.
And I mean, not to throw it that way, but that's kind of how it's been placed out.
Yeah. I mean, one thing that we have to resolve over this next year is how the governance structure would be, and if you look at it right now based on population, there would be eight Hillsborough County representatives to a board, and then there would be roughly three Pinellas County and three city of St. Petersburg. I mean, so it gets, it's a little different just because of the population difference. But we have to really work, I think, first and foremost on a vision for the Tampa Bay region, and then how each community can see themselves in that vision. And Pinellas County is distinct culturally, and it's distinct in its identity and its physical form, and so, as long as we're reflected in that vision, I believe that we can move forward and build consensus regardless of who sits on what seat and where. And then, we just need to figure out the mechanism that works so that we can ensure that local community input is essential to that process of making regional decisions. What we don't want are regional decisions top-down, forced down on communities that they don't buy into and support, and that may be some of the reason that the Greenlight Initiative failed a few years back. So, we need to build that up from the grassroots level, and I think that's why communities like Madeira Beach and others that are smaller, when they work together through an organization like the Big C or something else, they have a louder voice, and just like when we band together as a region, we have a louder voice and a more effective voice, because the regions are the economic engine of Florida. So, there's like a two-tiered system I think we need to look at there to make sure that identity comes through.
Thank you for addressing that. Commissioners, any questions?
Speaking about the top-down, we get a lot of unfundamentings from Tallahassee, so if you could elaborate on the bills that were introduced in the House and the Senate, are we looking to support those, or do you have any direction for our calls?
Well, right now, there's a bunch of bills that have been filed, and I would say probably the one that's most onerous is House Bill 17, which restricts some of the local government regulations on businesses, for instance. And some folks in the House that have filed that legislation feel that local regulations are job killers, but they kind of ignore the context of why those regulations were put in place. So, we're going to be watching that one particularly carefully, and right now, we haven't taken a formal position on it, but the Florida chapter of the American Planning Association is opposed to that, as well as Florida League of Cities and some other local governments. The ones that I'm paying particular attention to right now are the ones focused on funding for transportation and also how we govern ourselves. And so, that's the, there's a new bill filed to reconstitute the Tampa Bay Area Regional Transportation Authority into a transit authority, and instead of seven counties, it would be four counties, R3 plus manatee. And actually, I think there's some good provisions in that bill, but it doesn't provide any more funding. It just provides moving of the deck chairs a little bit, and if that makes a better decision, that's okay, but we do need the state to step forward with some additional funding for regional transportation, and that's something the state of Florida hasn't done a good job of historically.
Thank you.
Sure. And we just mailed to our board a packet of bill summaries, so I'd be happy to share that with this commission if you'd be interested in that. I could have my assistant send it over. Okay? We can take care of that tomorrow. Sure.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time on your agenda today.
Thank you. Commissioner Maroni, I spoke to him today. You're doing an outstanding job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our meeting's tomorrow, and I'll pass that along to him.
Next, Bogasiega update from staff, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, with some of the rumors and scuttlebutt going around town, it was requested of me to give an update. The rumor is that we broke the budget. There's no money to finish the project. The roads will never get paved in the Bogasiega area, and that's just not true. The contingency's only been accessed about 50%. Al Carrier, our friend of the city and our acting engineer, is here to give an update from his perspective, and Vince has a very quick 20 to 30-second update in regards to the actual dollars and cents on this project. But, A, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't have to do the dirty work Dave Marsicano does, the project's been going along quite swimmingly, if you will. I've looked at the numbers. I look at them every day, and I have no reason to believe that we're not going to meet budget. In fact, we're actually looking at adding or, you know, creating additional amenities to the project. We have flexibility to take care of some of the things that we didn't think we're going to be able to take care of. So, with that, I'll give the floor over to Al, and then if we want a dollars and cents update, we can get that from Mr. Tenalia.
Good evening. Al Carrier with Duell &amp; Associates. If you remember, Keystone won the bid for the Bogasiega roadway improvements project. They started the contract last August, August 2016. They had one year to complete, so they'll be completing the project in August 2017. The overall picture to date, we're about 41% complete with the project. It's going very well. It is a construction project. There are a few bumps in the road, but we're working those out. If you remember, the project really comprised of three components. One is the city's component, which is the roadway reconstruction, the pervious concrete, some new curbs, new outfalls, baffle boxes, things to improve the water quality. To date, as I mentioned, we're at 41% completion. Typical contracts have a 10% contingency. We've only used 1%, $3,000 of the contingency to date. The other, one other portion was the 140th Avenue downfall. We added a new outfall, stormwater outfall, to help alleviate some of the flooding on 140th Avenue. Total project cost for that was about $80,000. That has been complete. And the third component is Pinellas County's responsibility, which includes the potable water distribution and the Santer sewers. To date, they're also at about 41% complete, but Pinellas County, because utilities are so undetermined at the time of construction, they have a 20% contingency in their contract. And to date, they are at 66% of their contingency. They have run into a couple of issues. A lot of times, when the contractor's getting ready for shutdowns to change over the water pipes, they'll expose the water pipes, and while the pipes sit in an open trench waiting for the contract, or excuse me, waiting for Pinellas County to turn off some valves so they can make the reconnections, we've had two instances where the pipes have burst. Pinellas County's aware of it. They're looking for additional funding to replace all of the two-inch water main that's on the south end of the project. We had a meeting with Pinellas County last week at our progress meeting. They're aware of it. They're looking for the dollars. I'm pretty confident that they'll find them. That's it. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah, actually, Al, and I know I had a chance to speak to John Bennett, so, from the county administrator's office, Mark Winder's office, and I know that there's still some penny money for infrastructure projects, so I think they're looking at some of that penny money to do some of these projects here on the waterline. So, I know that, I've heard that from the county, so.
Good news.
I think, yeah, absolutely, and I know it's, the county is, working with the county's working with the county, but I think the county has definitely been working well with us on this project from things I've seen, and actually, like I said, coming from the county administrator's office.
Oh, exactly.
So, hearing pretty much the same from you, so that's consistency. Any other questions from any commissioners?
If the county doesn't come up with the money, are they going to extend the project, or are we going to have to extend the project? And that being said, it wouldn't be the fault of the cities that we extend that if we're waiting on the county to find funding.
They're going to, well, in my opinion, they're going to have to find the money. It's their utility.
In my opinion, too, but that may not happen. I mean, I got people knocking on my door now saying, you know, they're tearing up my road right in front of my house, so, and that's fine. You know, we're getting the project done, and we do have to log us to get it done, but if the county, you know, and I'm not a big county fan, that being said, you know, I just, I don't trust them to find the money, is what I'm saying.
It would be an issue. Because we're redoing...
Basically stops the project, and that, that being said, that's unacceptable.
And I agree. Because we're redoing all the roadways now, Keystone's going to want to get paid for their contract and finish out what they have to do.
Exactly, and that'll happen, and then they'll have to re-tear it back up when the county comes back in.
Re-tear it back up.
And that's, again, that's unacceptable.
Well, let's wait and see what happens with Pinellas County. If there's a hiccup, then I'll be calling on you all to go bang on doors.
We waited on Pinellas County for a long time when we were trying to get recycling there. We waited on them for years. I mean, I can go back a long ways here. The county has never really stepped up to the plate. I hope you're listening, county.
I will tell you, they have so far. There's been some minor reconstruction of intersections, new fire hydrants in different locations. They've stepped up, and they've paid for that, and you can see through their contingency dollars, they're well above, and I hear you loud and clear.
No, that being said, I couldn't be happier with the project. I think the impervious concrete is fantastic. I've talked to the people, the roads are finished, and they just absolutely love it. It's really helped the neighborhood. It's going to bring up the property values. It's a really, really good project. And the south side, just probably a little harder to do, because it's closer to lower levels. I mean, you know, that's one of our lowest level is one and a half feet, 1.4 inches. So they're digging them out, and there's water at the bottom of the hole. I mean, that's just the water level, so, thanks. Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you're always good at patting people on the back. You know, I come from a public works background, and where I came from, my last position, we had people on staff that would just manage a project like this, and that was their job all day. Dave handles that all by himself and does the marina and does sanitation and does all those other things. So since we got a crowd tonight, David Jones gets a pat on the back because he makes it real simple for me to make that project look easy.
David, thank you. And Commissioner Lister, actually, what I'm going to go ahead and do is I'm going to go ahead and reach out to John Bennett, the Assistant County Administrator, and have you give, it's a little different. I know you're kind of used to the old Bob days up there, and it's a lot different. We've been working with them on the.
I can also end on a meeting with you, absolutely.
I don't think we could do that, but what I think I can do is actually have, set up a meeting with you and Mr. Bennett because it's not the same. I mean, like I said, I do some different things with the county, tourism, EMS, and things are moving forward. And Mark Woodard has come in, and he has restructured the county and worked with municipalities. He's making it happen, and there's some available penny money for projects still out there, so.
I hope they can change my mind, Mr. Mayor.
I know. I'm hoping so, too, Commissioner Lister.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you do want actual dollars and cents, Vince can issue an email or anything that you want. Mr. Carrier kind of commented from a percentage standpoint where we're at, and that's really the meat and potatoes of what we're talking about tonight. So the idea that the budget is broken or we use all the contingency money is just a farce, is some of the things that we've learned that's going around the city. And so the budget for the project is right on, and we're in good shape.
And I'll add, that's from the finance directors, the Verifive, left on here from the city manager.
I can tell you that we are just over $1.2 million into the project. The total contract was established for $4.3 million. So we're about 28 percent into the project from a financial standpoint, and I can tell you that we've received over $440,000 in grant receipts from SWIFTMUD to date. They have a part of this project as well, so we're working on that. And if you need anything else, I can answer any questions or provide any other information you need.
Real quick on the matching funds from the grant. So the grant is being updated as we're getting built, correct?
Yeah.
The matching funds, SWIFTMUD's matching funds.
We've received about 30 percent, 33 percent?
So far, we've paid six pay applications from the contractor, and I've submitted reimbursement requests for five of those. So it's typically every two or three pay apps, as they come in, I'll send in a reimbursement request, and we'll get those funds back typically within 30 days or so. And so far, we've received $442,000 of that sort.
Does anybody else have a question for the city?
Good, thanks.
Just so you didn't hear him, or he stuttered, that's $400,000 of free money that we weren't receiving in years past. So when you guys are getting criticized, or staff's getting criticized for the salaries we make or anything like that, I think you're getting your bang for your buck on this one. This project, 50 percent funded on a multimillion-dollar project, it's not a bad deal.
And that was around $2 million, the matching funds? 1.2?
The 1.2 is what the city has spent so far, so.
Total project being four something, though?
The total project is a 4, it's a $4.3 million project, yep.
And total grants to be received are approximately?
Give me one second, I can verify that.
I thought that was 1.2.
It's a $1.3 million grant.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions on the Bogasiega project? All right, moving on.
Commissioners, if you do get questions, you know, Dave is great. He makes house visits. You know, if people are hearing something or they don't like anything, I just throw them under the bus, but he'll do it. He's done it before. Throw them Dave's way, throw them my way, but get those questions answered because there's a lot of, you know, misgivings going on out there, and we want people to know the truth and what's actually going on. So if they got any question at all or a concern or they just don't understand it, shoot them our way because we can make it pretty simple.
And actually, Dave, to your credit, I heard from Mr. Hilda today, and, you know, I guess you have been working out there on Saturdays, you drive around on Saturdays, checking things out and talking to people, so thank you very much for following up on everything out there. All right, moving on. Next, distribution of ballots for appointments to the city boards. Mr. City Manager, I'm going to go and let you proceed with that.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, and, sorry about that, spilled water all over my phone, that's great. The tabulation for the library board ballots before the clerk gets up. You have two applications tonight. One of them came in late, which gives you, doesn't give you options, but you have options in regards to that. So I would advise you that the late application should not be considered. The posting was pretty straightforward. It needed to be dated by, I believe, February 27th. So that would eliminate that one. You can accept that application and say, you know, we want to have some friendly competition in the matter and go ahead and waive that. You can just appoint the person that did get her application in time. Or a third option is to run the gamut again and re-advertise and take a look at this a second time. So that's your three options really on this one, unless the city attorney has anything else for me. I did speak to the lady that applied late, and she understands the technicality and is comfortable with the fact that, you know, she may be disqualified from it. So, you know, no one's going to walk out of here, you know, upset or irritated with the city, but you do have to make a decision tonight, and so we can pursue.
Commissioner, what's your pleasure? Would you like to?
I have a question also.
Okay.
We kind of have the same issue with the appointment for the planning and zoning board. There's no date that that one was submitted.
That was because it was submitted via email, and we have the email date when it came in, so everything else is, everybody applied on time except for that one.
Okay.
So would the commission want to re-advertise or just move forward at this time?
I'm for moving forward at this time. Rules are rules. They're in place for a reason. People understand them, or they don't. If you don't understand the rules, there's still no excuse. You break the law, ignorance is no excuse.
Do you have a consensus for that?
They need to appoint her. Yes. No. They can just do it by motion.
Move forward.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was asking the city attorney just because of the ballot issue and that type of thing. You can just make a motion to appoint, I believe it's Marilyn Halflin.
Okay.
Who got her application in on time, so there would be no paper ballot needed since there's only one candidate being considered.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept Marilyn Halflin's application to the library board.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any comments from staff?
No, we'll inform the library board. We all know that the executive director has resigned, and I'm not exactly who's steering the ship over there, but we'll find out and let them know and get Ms. Halflin everything she needs to get going on the committee.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Spilde?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, tabulation of planning commission ballots.
Yes.
Since there is two on that, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, yes, so the Madam Clerk is going to hand out a revised tabulation sheet. You put an X next to the person's name that you are voting for, and tonight, that would require three votes for that person since we're a committee of four tonight.
All right, and before the commission votes, would the two candidates like to come forward and introduce themselves? Ms. Carson, you're at the top of the list. Would you like to go first?
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, citizens of Madeira Beach. I did not know I was going to be speaking this evening, but good evening. I am a licensed Florida Realtor here at Engle and Volkers in Madeira Beach. I've resided in Madeira Beach for many years. I'm very proud to be a citizen here. I'm very excited about the growth and the beauty of our city, and to be a part of that would be a distinction and an honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
David, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name's David Wheeler. I'm a business owner here in Madeira Beach. I have a shop down in Johns Pass. I've lived here for three years now, and I can tell you, of all the places I've lived in Florida, this is the best. I think the direction the city is taking is fantastic with the beautification and the progress, and it would be my honor to be involved in helping shape that for years to come now. Thank you.
And David, before you take off, I know you're a new business owner here, too, also, and, you know, I'm going to give you a second to go and plug your business because, you know, it's been nice watching Johns Pass expand, and I know over the last couple of months, I've been talking to the business owners. It seems like everybody, you know, from January last year to January this year, same, I'm hearing the same thing from February last year to February this year, where everybody's up 15 to 18 percent. So, I mean, seeing young people invest in the city is quite exciting.
Yes, we're off to a really great start for the year, and my business is called Tarpon Bay Trading Company. It's on the boardwalk. We sell finer t-shirts and clothes, and we're not your average t-shirt shop. Let's just say that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Does the City Clerk want to pick the ballots up or?
I go. Just need to make sure that you've either initialed or your name is on them on each one of the ballots so that we know who's making the vote.
And David, I want to thank you very, very much for applying, and please, I know that you're getting heavily involved with the Johns Pass Merchants Association, and I want to thank you once again for applying, and please keep your ear because usually the planning commission, usually there's a couple of people been on there for a few years, so you might see another turnover coming, so please, I'm sure somebody will advise you because I think you have a lot to offer in the city of Madeira Beach. And Angela, congratulations. I know that you're a very hard worker. I know a lot of people that you work with, and I know that, you know, and this is all in positive, and I was raised by a single mother, so congratulations. Next, public comment. This section is reserved for public comment on matters pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Who would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Gavahi takes the stand, if you will, we're changing things up a little bit with how we do public comment because people are getting very confused with those public comment cards, and then people don't get here in time and they arrive late, and so we're going to kind of go back to the way we used to do things where the mayor, whoever's proceeding over the meeting, just sees a show of hands. If somebody raises their hand, they can come up to speak, and they give their name and their address for the record, for the recording clerk, and then we go on from there. So if anybody's wondering in the audience tonight where the comment card is, or can they get one so they can speak tonight, they don't need that. We're going to go old school and try that out. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished commissioners, Mr. City Manager, staff, and wonderful citizens of Madeira Beach. My name is Huish Gavahi. I reside at 423 150th Avenue, Madeira Beach. I would like to explain to our citizens tonight why I'm not on that side of the dais. In July of last year, when I was appointed to this board, apparently, I was notified maybe a day early to my seat, and based on my understanding, that was not appropriate, I guess, maybe according to sunshine law, maybe it was not the best approach. I was honored to take the seat, and I really, truly enjoyed it. Recently, I found out that based on citizens, I guess, complained that the, based on that technicality in the system, I will not be sitting on that side of the dais, so I am in public tonight and like to tell everybody that I am running strong. It's my desire to get back in that seat. I have a lot of supporters. A lot of people have called me, talked to me, and have given me their support, so I want to let public know that I am in the running, and I will be honored to continue with the seat. Also, wanted to state that the team of the city, the staff, just absolutely, totally wonderful. They're awesome. Every time I talk to Carl Shane, every time I talk to Cheryl, David, Darrell, I mean, they're just absolutely, totally wonderful. Also, relate to some of the things that are out there as far as, you know, we're in debt. Vince had provided this item, this one-sheet page, so that citizens can share it and look at it, and it's actually out there on the table so they can take it home. This city is $4.7 million in surplus. So this $4.7 million is enough to run the city for three years without having to bring a dime. So I wanted to assure the citizens that the city is doing wonderfully. Do not listen to those rhetorics, do not listen to those folks that are not friends of the city, and they want to turn this city to a city that really works backwards. So citizens, please know that I'm here and I'm running. Please vote. March 14.
Mr. Mayor, before you call the next speaker, I want to clarify something that Mr. Gavahi mentioned, and it's why he's not up here tonight, and there's probably people in the audience maybe not following exactly what he said, and I want to clarify it for everybody. And Tom wasn't involved. In fact, it might have even been my decision, but when we, you, voted to put Mr. Gavahi in the late Pat Chaunce's seat, what we had done for years, years before I got here, was you would send the application home with the Board of Commissioners. You'd get it separately, you wouldn't kibitz about it, but you'd fill it out and then send it to staff, and staff would calculate it like we do right here. And our friend, Mr. David Wheeler, he seems to be taking the blow of not getting to the planning commission very well, but what if you were being appointed to the city commission and you brought your grandmother and your spouse or your kids, and you had to sit here and then walk out dejected because you weren't selected? So we thought that we would be compassionate to those not selected and allow them to save some face. It's not easy not being picked. Everybody remembers I was the last kid picked on a lot of teams in grade school. Same thing, right? You know, everybody wants to be involved. Well, that's what we tried to do, and we were sued over it, and it was proven in court or at least ruled in court that that was a violation of the sunshine. So you guys are not violators. The policy, the process, rather, of what we used to be compassionate to candidates not selected was proved in court to be not compliant with the sunshine law. So there's going to be a lot of rumors out there, yeah, the city got whacked in court, and yet, we got proven wrong. We did, the process was not correct, but you certainly are not sunshine violators. The process was, and that's why we do it this way. But you can also see why we did it the other way to help people save some face, so I just wanted to clarify that. And so because of the ruling in court, Mr. Gavahi was never really appropriately appointed. Now, the election's next week, and that mitigates the entire issue, and off we go. But really, that's why he's not up there tonight, so that's why everybody at home understands, everybody in the audience understands, and everybody understands how we failed in court last week. Thank you.
And actually, I'm going to take my three minutes and come to the podium. I'm resident of Madeira Beach. I'm a voter and I'm a citizen, and I'm going to ask Ginger Tolliver to join me at the podium, and I'm going to ask Mark Hubber to join me at the podium.
I'm sure y'all remember Ms. Tolliver, right? Her public comment is usually quite colorful. And Ginger came to me a couple of months ago, and she's involved with a lot of organizations and with a lot of people, and she actually does things with Big Brothers and Big Sisters. and with a lot of people. And she actually does things with big brothers and big sisters. And she's, I guess there's some kids out there and working with these kids. And it's, I guess their checklist things in life, or their dreams of getting things done.
They have a bucket list.
A bucket list. Thank God, how can I forget that one?
Yeah, that was, that was the truth.
And this gentleman's, young man's bucket list was to do fishing, and take his brothers and sisters with him. So I, Ginger called me up. And knowing that I know a lot of friends in fishing, so my next call was to Captain Mark Hubbard. And Mark, you stepped it up. And I want to thank you. The kids had a great time. And I'm sure some of y'all saw the, the thing on, excuse me, it was Channel thirteen. Thank you. And Mark, you do a lot of things for the community. We've been together for a lot of years. My first grouper I ever caught in my entire life, I was fifteen years old, was, I believe, with your father. And I think you were a mate on the trip.
I was probably cutting your fish back into the dock.
Mark, Mark was about to actually just call, if any of y'all could believe it.
Well, you have to give credit to his son, too, Dylan.
Yeah. Dylan, the kids really did a great job.
We took sixty kids out. They had a wonderful time with their, sixty people. We had thirty kids, I believe, and thirty bigs, are their significant big brothers. And we work with that organization, Ancestors. That's, that's one of many events. And I look forward to doing more events with you. And that's within our mission statement of Hubbard's Marina and giving kids taco boxes, not Xboxes. And that's the next generation.
Oh, that's a good one.
Thanks, Mark. From both parts of the area, you know, and I, and I gotta thank Mark. We spent a lot of years in DC to make it where people, recreational fishermen can keep fishing. And I want to thank you again, Mark. But this evening, the reason I'm here, of course, you know, you can't give the whole trip away. And there's some friends of the city that are actually out there. And I want to thank them. And I want to give you $2,000 to Big Brothers and Big Sisters for this fishing trip.
We've got $10 towards next year.
You got $10 towards next year. So, to the friends of the program that donated to this, thank you very, very much. And Mark, I know you did a lot.
Of all the things that they've gotten to do this year, this was the most successful. And there are already more applicants for next year than the boat can hold.
We have to do more trips.
Mark, thank you. Ginger, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, David.
Who would like to speak next? Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, the board, and the people assembled here tonight, I just wanted to remind the community. And I think a little over a week, the citizens of Madeira Beach are gonna once again be asked to stand up and vote for the people that are gonna represent their interests on this board for the next few years. It's one of the most noble expressions of democracy at a municipal level, for people to stand up to be counted. And I can only say, get out and vote. But I also want to say, if the number of voters match the number of signs that are out in the streets of Madeira Beach this year, we're gonna have a hundred percent vote. So just remember to vote. Thank you.
Tolliver?
This is really not to you all. It's to everybody out there. So do I have to?
Speaking of the microphone, yes.
Yeah, speaking of the mic, and Mr. Mayor, if we can remind the speakers to say their name and their address for the record, please.
Hi, Ginger Tolliver, 814 Bay Point Drive, Madeira Beach, Florida. My, my statement tonight is a plea to the residents of Madeira Beach, and the audience, and all the people they talk to. Please don't be so credulous. In the past four to five weeks prior to the election, I've been deluged by person to person, phone, mail, door hangers, making rash statements concerning candidates for the election, members of the commission, and Madeira Beach staff. In particularly, Shane and Cheryl were the recipients of a big witch hunt. Excuse me. When you read, hear these things, check them out. Use your brain. Don't believe everything you hear. I, just because something's stated or written doesn't mean it's true. Become an informed citizen. Attend the council meetings. Listen and don't be afraid to question. You may be surprised at what you find out. I did. Initially, I was dynamically opposed to the proposed developments. Today, I'm firmly in support of them. That's because I came to the meetings, listened to questions, and made my own decisions. I wholeheartedly support the Madeira Beach staff, mayor, and all council members. Madeira Beach used to be a joke when I first moved here. Now we have momentum. It's a beautiful city. It would be a shame to go back to the horrible way it used to be. Mark my word, I'm always true to my word. If the current commissioner and mayor aren't reelected, I'm moving.
Yes, sir. Yep, sorry. And then you, right after.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Dominic Bianchi. I'm here to speak on Issue Three under Unfinished Business.
Hey, Dominic, what, what we do is, when I go ahead and, I'll open it up for public comment on that, so you can say your comment for that. And this is just for, this is actually for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to be a pest, but again, we do have to remind the speakers to say their name and their address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Steve Page, 2001 Gulf Boulevard, Suite Five, Indian Shores, Florida. I just wanted to, I know the election's soon, and development's a big issue in this town. Of course, I am a developer. And I wanted to, I thought you might find some statistics on our, one of the developments that I felt like was a partnership getting done here in this great town, which was the Marriott Courtyard. And so that some of the folks can see just how much of an effect, I hope that's proper, a development has. And as you know, from the police, to the streets, to the lights, all the facilities that a town provides have to be paid for. So, I kind of got this a little while ago from Rob, who's our great manager there. But we, that Marriott employs thirty-five to forty people at any given time. The real estate taxes that were paid on the property, for example, in 2015 were $29,000. That goes to, of course, city and county. The last tax bill, not that I like this, but you guys would like this, and it's good for the town, a hundred, almost $200,000. That's a big difference. Every single year. The bed tax that goes from this one hotel, this one development, is approximately a quarter of a million, two hundred and six, just depends on your sales that year, say $260,000 a year. Your other normal sales tax and so forth is almost $300,000 a year. That's a lot, a lot. If you think about that in just a decade, that's close to $8 million. That's just from this one development. And that's why growth is so important. If things get stagnant in other towns, all of a sudden you hear about them. They can't pay for repairs. They can't do certain things. And the reason this town is vibrant and growing is because of pro-development. And I hope that the election, the people that vote, realize this. So I want to thank you guys for being our partner there, and a great, great success as the Marriott.
Mr. Page, just one question. That $200,000 you're talking about, is that the overall? Is that including the county millage of 5.2? Or is that just the 2.2 mills from Madeira Beach?
That's not the Madeira Beach. That's, I did on a six percent bed tax.
Okay.
Seven percent sales tax. And the real, I don't know what our mills are on the, on the real estate tax.
Yes, because I think in the overall revenue from Adalorum is 2.6 billion. Correct me if I'm wrong on that one. But I think that's correct.
2.26 million.
Okay, two, okay. I was gonna say, boy, if that's correct, you, you're a big portion of that Adalorum, brother. Okay?
You gotta survive, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bob Lyons. I'm 2001 Gulf Boulevard, Indian Shore, Suite Six. I'd like to say that I, I don't live in this town, but I have ownership in four businesses here. And Steve and I are involved in one of those. And I'm in three of the restaurants down there at John's Pass. When we first came to this town and started our first development here, I believe Mayor Palladino and, and most of this commission were not a part of this town. And it was in complete disarray. I was told to meet with a number of different people with regard to zoning, and what had to be done to get our projects going. And it ended up, the man that was the city manager at that point, a wonderful gentleman, was the, the chief of the fire department. He had no idea what was going on. Couldn't help me understand what we needed to do to, to bring our, our business forward. When this commission was elected, y'all selected Shane as your city manager, and he has done a wonderful job. He brought Dave Healy in to help. And y'all have been nothing but supportive. Very, you may just toe the line and do the things we're supposed to do, but that's what we want to do anyhow. And I appreciate all y'all's support through this time. And I want to say I fully support the incumbents and, and the staff. And Shane's staying here. And I hope it continues like it has been in the past. Thank y'all for your, all your efforts.
Good evening. My name's Jim Everett, 15458 First Street East, Madeira Beach. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven days a week. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, staff, first of all, I want to acknowledge Vince DiNalia. I've had the chance to work with Vince both professionally and in his role as the, as the Finance Director and Assistant City Manager. And I tell you, the man, no one is more professional than that man. No one is more organized than that man. You ask him a question, it takes him a minute, but he's got the answer. And that's a huge loss for us. He's played an incredible role in the city and all of our financial moves that we've made here. And I just want to congratulate you on the job you've done. And thank you for your service. I appreciate that. Secondly, I want to express my utter disgust in the meeting that was had with him by two candidates for office. To meet with him under the guise of asking questions about the budget, to ask him if he would like to be city manager, when they promptly dismissed the city manager who's led the incredible progress in this city for the last five years, is oxymoronic to me. We're talking about the folks that love to file ethics complaints against people, and who talk about transparency and honesty. And yet, they hold these types of backdoor meetings. So I would just ask everyone who is voting in the election next week, that they consider that strongly when they make their decision. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Gay Prince. I live on Marguerite Drive, 14045. My neighbor, Denny Vanderwall, the war veteran amputee whose concerns over the monolithic massing of development and its effects on traffic and the quality of his life, I voiced for him to you, died yesterday. I am proud to have known him and feel privileged that he called me his friend. He died knowing you people up there in the fancy white leather chairs didn't give a flying fig for him nor his fellow veterans. When the eighty-five-year-old Korean War vet tried to speak in front of you and the public regarding the consideration, his government might want to acknowledge for him and his compatriots, you forced him to sit down without voice. I am ashamed of you and appalled. Not one up there gave any dignity nor appreciation for what these people have sacrificed. You only chose to make them suffer further with showing your callous disregard for their health and what they would have to face just to get to the VA hospital. These people fight for rights and freedoms. And Denny signed the petition against the height and density that you want. He died knowing you dismissed the democracy he defended and that you squashed his voice. I hear so many voices saying, "Thank you for your service to veterans." Denny was so happy and would tell everyone that I used my voice to actually speak on his behalf. I'm asking anyone who hears my voice tonight and in the future on live streaming to do more than just pay this lip service. Use your voice to speak for their concerns. To call, write, contact the VA, and anyone else you can think of that would care about the vets. Because they need a stronger, more powerful advocate than just little me. He loved his family. He loved his home of Madeira Beach. He loved Florida. If I may appeal to you in the audience at this time, to stand up and show your thanks for the troops and the veterans, and ask God and the government to protect and serve them in return, I would appreciate it.
And for our country, and for the men and women that serve it and have served it, please.
Thank you all. And please heed Denny's voice. He's still watching to see that democracy takes place. Resurrect that petition. Let the people have their voice in a referendum. Thank you. And to Denny's family, and to friends and family of all the veterans and troops, we love you and we thank you. And we will show you that we mean it. Not just pay lip service, and not just say thank you for your service, but do something for your service to thank them in actuality.
Ms. Flynn?
My name is Sunny Flynn. I live at 160 145th Avenue East, Madeira Beach. Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Staff. I actually come here with good news, exciting news, and gifts. It was announced this week, thousands of people voted from all over the world, locals, and visitors from, visitor insiders. Seafood Festival received Best Festival for 2016. John's Pass Village came number two for Best Shopping. And in Best Breweries, Mad Beach Craft Brewing. So Madeira Beach, out of fifteen categories, got three. So we are no longer just a small, little, sleepy village. We are a destination. As you know, it takes a village to make things happen. And over three hundred volunteers, John's Pass Seafood Festival is now the largest in the United States. And we are, this year is the second year that we have won Best Festival. I'd like to take a minute tonight to recognize two volunteers that spent countless hours with me. And that would be Troy Hayes, I'm a Madeira Beach resident, engine twenty-nine, and Jan Dunn, with Keller Williams Realtor. She rounded all those three hundred volunteers up, so they don't mind standing. I'd also like to present gifts to you, Mayor. It was your effort and your encouragement for me to go after grant money that made John's Pass Seafood Festival the best in the United States and in Madeira Beach.
Mr. Mayor, if you can wait, the clerk is getting her phone to take some pictures to send to the newspaper.
Folks, I gotta admit, that's pretty cool. When I first became mayor and got involved with the Torres Development Council, you know, I knew there was funds out there for event, event funding, elite funding. And I've watched Clearwater get it. I've watched St. Pete get it. And year I've watched Clearwater get it, I've watched St. Pete get it, and year after year, I sit there and go, "Wait a minute, the John's Pass Seafood Festival," and God bless Pat Chaunce, you know, she was one of the founders of it, getting it started. You know, it's the largest seafood festival in the state of Florida, the third largest in the country, and we were not getting funding, the county was not, nobody was going after it. I mean, I kept going after people, and I'll tell you, Ms. Flynn, you stepped it up, and I was just doing the math, I think in bed tax dollars over the last two years, you know, we brought in 140,000 bed tax dollars, just in events for that one event, the John's Pass Seafood Festival. So, congratulations. And Terry, that's not the only one, because I know you're a big one in bed tax dollars. Think about it also, over $250,000 for beach walkovers and bed tax dollars coming back to Madeira Beach. The Old Salts has gotten $115,000 back in bed tax dollars for their events. So, that matters. When you're sitting there looking at funding and taxing and bringing into the city, that's outstanding. So, guys, I'm gonna tell you what, outstanding Madeira Beach.[661.43][661.43](applause)
Shane, this is for you. John's Pass Village, five years ago, was against the city. We had some difficulties, and it took your recognition to realize that John's Pass was a jewel, and let's fix this, and we did. Davy Jones, come on up.
You thought you were just gonna get recognized for your sailing skills tonight, huh?
Dave Marsakano, without you, John's Pass Village and Madeira Beach would be horrible.[724.23][724.23](laughing) Actually, it would be, because what you do and the dedication to your service, and when I ask for something and you say, "What do you need, Sunny?", you've made sure that John's Pass Seafood Festival and John's Pass is taken care of. The last one is for Doug Andrews and his team. He has dedicated Miranda to me for Seafood Festival. Miranda has also gone out and above to market Madeira Beach as a whole, instead of just one or the other. His timeless effort and his team's effort is very valuable to the city, so I'm presenting one to Doug Andrews, but I think he left. John's Pass Village and Boardwalk host over 2.5 million visitors a year, and we cannot do this, we could not be best at anything without the support and partnership of the city in Madeira Beach. So, thank you Commissioners, and thank you, all the volunteers, for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn.[801.13][801.13](applause)
Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff, Bill Carnes, Madeira Beach Town Center. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Town Center today, I'm speaking on behalf of Rock Park. And it was almost, I don't know, three and a half or four years ago that I was fortunate enough to stand before you all in the old City Hall. I'll never forget the day, it was a very rainy day, the room was flooding, the buildings were deteriorated. I'm proud to say that I've been able to stand up here numerous times since this building's been done. I want to commend you all for the wonderful job that you've done there. But it's with great pride that I'm here today to announce that the first pilings have gone in the ground for the new observation deck out behind City Center. Pretty exciting for me, as it's a dream that we've had for quite a while now, and without the Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff, that wouldn't be possible. Also like to talk a little bit about some upcoming events that wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for you all and what you've created here in Madeira Beach. And next Monday, the 13th, we have the Second Annual Kite Day here in Madeira Beach, giving away 800 kites and 800 sunglasses to all the kids. I encourage everyone in the community to bring their kids out, it's gonna be a great day. We'll have fire folks out and the sheriff, and lots of activities for the families to enjoy. Also, coming up on April the 1st, we have Big Brothers and Big Sisters gonna be fishing along the wall here. It's, I believe, the second year now in a row, but there'll be hundreds of kids out here fishing along the seawall here at Madeira Beach and in Rock Park. Also on that same day is the Second Annual Philfest. It's a music festival, it's a fundraiser for the cure for melanoma, for skin cancer, through the Bryant Family Foundation. It's a wonderful event, it was held eight years in a row at, in Oldsmire. We lured them over here last year, they're back, and the comments that I get from that organization and working with the city and the staff, exceptional. And I just want to thank you all, thought it'd be a nice day to have some positive news about what's happening here in our beautiful city. So, thank you all very much.[971.13][971.13](applause)
And Mr. Carnes, let me just say, you know, number one, when you came, boy, Pat's gonna have me on this one, there's not gonna be a dry eye. When you came forward with Rock Park, I mean, it was just, there, brother, and for your loss, we love you. And I know that Commissioner Ingrid here, we got to come down when you did some pain, and we met a lot of the families that have their children's name, and couple with you. Thank you.[1005.13][1005.13](applause) And as far as the fishing observation deck, you know, there's another family in here tonight, and I really gotta thank the Honorable David Jolly. I mean, we had some, we had some hoops to jump through to get the permits for this, and Congressman Jolly stepped up, he helped us out, but the Spielers family, guys, y'all made it happen, and I'm working with Congressman Jolly and getting this through to National Marine Fisheries. I want to thank you from the city of Madeira Beach, because fishing to me is where it's at, and I know you, Doug, and Senior, I know y'all are into fishing, and it changes a kid's life, and I think that's the greatest thing in the world, what we're doing out there, and I want to thank you for your help.[1046.44][1046.44](applause) See, Shane, Pat did nail me, I just can't, I'm just an Italian, and as you get older, you just get more emotional, sorry.
My name's Doug Spielers, 3030 Patrick Place, Clearwater, Florida. While I'm not a resident of Madeira Beach, I feel like I am, and my son, who I'm very proud of, and a second-generation marine contractor in Madeira Beach, is a resident for 20 years. I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Mr. City Manager and his wonderful staff, thank you for letting me speak. Bob Lyons said something that was pretty cute a few minutes ago. He said that he'd been here for a long time, and when he first came here, this city was in disarray. Disarray is an understatement. I've been coming to these commission meetings for, I think Pat Chaunce told me not long ago, for about 47 or 48 years before she passed away. I've been through very docile commission meetings, a lot of years, and I've been through where there's almost fistfights and complete bedlam. Madeira Beach has come from a, you can't even call it a sleepy little town, it was a backwards town. We all loved it, but it was backwards, it wasn't going anywhere. And in the last five years, I've seen a transition from afar, because I'm not here like my son is every day. But Shane Crawford and the staff that he's picked, you, Mr. Mayor, and the commission that you've had, you have done wonders with this town. How many municipalities of this size, smaller and larger, would be in the enviable position to look at Vince's books and see the balance sheet on this town? Few and far between. I'm a marine consultant, I used to be the marine consultant for this city. I have seen maybe three marinas in my lifetime that were profitable in a municipality. You have one of the best. The fellow behind the beard over there does such a fantastic job with all of his positions, and all of this is envied by everybody in municipal and state government, county government. Y'all have done a heck of a job. To hear what's going on behind the scenes right now, I hope I'm not hearing it right, because a bunch of the people that are saying that are not very well attuned. They need to know how to read a financial statement, they need to sit, look around this beautiful building we're sitting in, somebody else called attention to the building that used to leak that you all use this, have your commission meetings in. This is a far cry from all of that. Mr. Carnes, Park that he sponsored, all of the things you're doing, you're about to have a beautiful fishing pier, have to do that.
Observation deck.
You all done a, you all have done a wonderful job. Marina grants, I could go on and on with the staff has done. You know how many grants are obtained for marinas and the rest of the customers that we have throughout the state? Not very many, you can count them on one hand. And if I told you the, oh, I'm sorry, David. I always go last, so I don't have to talk too much. Thank you all very much, and good luck in the coming election.[1260.01][1260.01](applause)
And Mr. Spielers, I just would like to mention, and it goes on just a few more seconds, you know, like I said, what your family's done, what Doug, your son, has done here, you know, it's amazing. But, you know, what you've done working with Dave, and Dave, once again, kudos to you. I mean, I've, I owned a fishing charter business, I've worked with that marina for over 25 years, and you have done an outstanding job, I hate to say it, and, but, you know, it's hard to make chicken salad out of chicken whatever droppings there, but you've done it. You've done it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great staff, we've got great people.[1303.26][1303.26](applause)
Hi, Miss Yehan, President of the Treasure Island Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce, representing the businesses in the area. I'm not a resident of Madeira Beach, and about a year and a half ago, I took the position, and I just want to say, with the changing of the guards that may happen, that everybody here tonight on this panel has been very supportive of the Treasure Island Madeira Beach Chamber and myself. Shane, I can call him up and ask him a question, Mayor, call you up, you were one of the first to say, "Hey, here's my cellphone number, you call me anything you need." Not everybody is that forthcoming, so I just appreciate the support that you have given us, and I plan to support you as much as I can, and thank you.[1365.01][1365.01](applause)
Miss Yehan, I want to thank you and the chamber, you know, not only John's Pass, there's more to Madeira Beach than John's Pass, and what you've worked with the other businesses throughout town, thank you very much.
How's it going, everybody? Nick Newberry, 311 Boca Seaga Drive, Mayor, Commissioners, City Employees. I just wanted to say, as a 31-year-old who owns this house and works in town, I think the development is great, it's, the revitalization is gonna be amazing, and I also think all of you do an amazing job, and I don't think you guys could have, be any more ethical. So, thank you very much for what you've done. Numbers don't lie, and I wish you all the best in your forthcoming terms.
I like seeing Pat's name on your cover sheet, that's really awesome. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff, citizens of Madeira Beach. My name is Jeff Brown, I own a retail jewelry store at 201 Tom Stewart Causeway. I love Madeira Beach, I love all this good feeling in this room tonight, so sorry, I'm fixing to change a few things. I own property here, I'm proud of it, I'm vested in this city, and I'm glad to be. So, I want you to imagine how I felt when I came to work this morning, on this beautiful morning, sun shining, in a great mood, and ready to serve the citizens and visitors of Madeira Beach, only to find that some individual had vandalized all of the political signage in front of my shop yet again. All right, so, let me find my point here. There we go. The names of my friends were trampled into the dirt, and you'd be pretty pissed off, too. Enough. I've got security cameras all over my store, they're high-definition and they're infrared, and guess what? I got you on video, if you're listening or you're watching. I contacted the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department this morning, I filed a complaint, and gave a copy of said video to the sheriff's deputy. Opportunity is knocking for someone here this evening or at home watching tonight. You can simply identify yourself, apologize to those that you have offended, and all will be forgiven, all will be forgotten. If you do not, I'll be forced to ask the sheriff's department to identify the person on the video, and you will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. Secondly, person I'm speaking to, look how your high school behavior is hurting your constituents. It makes you all look bad, and if I were on that team, I'd throw you in the water and get rid of you. Winners never cheat, cheaters never win, a childhood phrase we should all live by. Win with respect, not with deceit. Real quickly, I'm running out of time, getting a little too passionate. For those of you with the lawsuits and the ethical complaints, stop it. You're hurting our city, enough's enough. Whoever this guy is with his law degree and his snake, and he's charming you to do these things, you need to stop listening and you need to start looking at what's going on in the city. It's good things, good things, good energy. And for that person who wants to stop that good energy, you have a chance tonight to give yourself up, or we're gonna put a hammer on you.
Sorry, only the wife can back that one up. Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff, Tabitha Brown, my husband and I own commercial property at 201 150th. Dedicated, aggressive, motivated, and diligent. Most, if not all of you, would agree, these are all excellent qualities to have in an employee. There are currently employees that have been drugged through the mud over their personal lives, which has obviously not hindered either one of them from successfully handling their job responsibilities. It absolutely astonishes me that there are individuals in Madeira Beach and some outside of our city that have made it their mission to slander city employees, spread false rumors, allow themselves to be misinformed, and then to top it off, run for public office. Madeira Beach is too small for these childish antics of those who obviously have nothing better to do but sit at home with keyboard courage, play Monday morning quarterback, and gloat to their friends how you would have done things differently. Yet, there you are, remaining, sitting at home, or worse, confronting your fellow citizen to file complaints on your behalf because you know, names don't stay anonymous. Don't do the work for the cowards, make them put their name on the documents. I ask that residents put our city first next Tuesday. Look at the amazing progress our current officials have helped escort in. With a $400,000 grant in 2016 for Gulf Boulevard, and recent lobbying for additional half million dollars in baseball field lighting and other city improvements, I ask, when has this city ever had a more aggressive city manager representing it? One who works far beyond his duties and makes it, makes this a better city and to keep taxes low. We all need to recognize how extremely fortunate we are to have these existing officials working for us in our city. And the time for change, that was in 2011, when Travis Palladino was elected Mayor, followed by 2012, when Shane Crawford came to our city as city manager. Now, let's let them finish the job they started.
That's gotta be the fudge guy in the back, Mr. Larry? Is that you?
No, that's Ray.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Freeze.
Oh, freeze, oh my God, Commander, come forward. Commander, come forward. I didn't recognize you without the Ferris wheel in your front yard. Hey, you were low, you looked like my other friend there, the, the, the fudge guy that makes the fudge on John's Pass, sorry.
I won't tell murder that.
You better watch, Dave, he'll start the clock on you. Commander, it's good to see you this evening.
Good to see you. Mayor, and all the Commissioners, like the gentlemen that spoke before, thank you for letting me speak. I have, the couple before me said they get a mission, pardon me, emotional about this city. They can't come close to being emotional about this city like I am. So, I'll try to control that. I, I am an engineer, I was a naval aviator, and that's why I'm up here speaking, because I am a veteran, at least, I think, 26 years in the service qualifies me, qualifies me for that. I can't speak for all veterans, I can only speak for one, and that's me. I have had support from all the previous boards, in fact, one of the mayors was even foolish enough to invite me to be on the Planning Commission, but I'm old enough to be smart enough not to have to do that. I don't volunteer anymore. There's stages in your life you lead, you follow, or you get the hell out of the way. I'm in that latter stage, yet I can't resist saying my piece. And my piece is that this place, Madeira Beach, we loved. And we figured, instead of visiting paradise, we'd come and live here, from Indiana. That's not a great decision, because Indiana doesn't raise the bar too high when it comes to competition. Even though I loved Indiana, too, but my, my one neighbor there said that he loved flat, that's why he was there, so he really should have come to Florida, because I think the highest speed of peace around is the bridge we have to go over. In the issues that are going on, I hate to see the backbiting, the misinformation, that's a nice word for lies. What has not been emphasized enough is that traffic is going to increase in the future, just like it has increased in the past. And it doesn't matter whether we have development or not, cars, we have the bridge, and the car's going to come over the bridge, and they're going to go on our roads. The advantage of the development is, the developments bring their own parking, whereas, if we have no development, the cars are still going to come through, maybe not quite as many, but they'll stop here, and they'll park here. And again, as Mr. Spiel mentioned, prosperity for a city is very, very important. It's not the only thing, but it's very important. And I think this city has behaved as a model for democracy, because they let anybody come up and say their piece, whether they agree or not. I have not always agreed with the city, and they've let me speak on other issues at other times, and I didn't get my way, but nobody wins them all. Thank you very much.
Mayor, thank you. And Helen, you think, your dad used to tell me some great military stories, and your father was Lieutenant Colonel and served the Army Air Corps and the Air Force, and Reese there, I'm telling you, he's, he's right there in that caliber. Would anybody else, there's the chocolate man. Sorry, I just saw the top of the head, Larry, and I, you know, you and the commander were kind of looking a little sad, you just probably can do a few more push-ups than he can.
I'm 35 a day now. Thank you, Mayor. My name's Larry Butterfield, and I do have a fudge shop at John's Pass, 160, John's Pass Boardwalk. I'd like to agree with everything he said, and I am a former veteran, I've always gotten support from you and the staff. Also, the fact, I just want to think, everything going here is great, just keep it all up. The property values will go up, it's just a great thing for the city and the county. I appreciate everything that's going on here. Keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you for doing the 22 push-ups, 22 days for our veterans. Thank you for doing the 22 push-up challenge.
I enjoyed it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I knew I was going to get that one. Would anybody else like to speak? Mr. J.J. Broody. Mr. Mayor, how are you doing this evening?
I just couldn't say still without saying something, because it's so important. I'm J. Berry, former mayor of Frederington Shores, from 1994 to 2006. I work in the leadership with Florida, the League of City, for over 12 years, have a lot of municipality experience, and lived in, on the beaches for over 35 years. All these beach community here in Pinellas County is, as you know, is a jewel, and we're hooked at the hip when we do beach nourishment, when a city develop. On your north and south, it's all pre-bet, bet community. Where we all come, we come to Madeira, when you want to have fun, when you have guests coming over. And I always thought that Madeira, for years and years and years, everybody is moving forward, but Madeira. It was stuck. And why? Because of the negativeness, gridlock, nastiness, it could not move forward. To do that, you needed leadership that willing to put their family, their reputation, their time, to move this town forward. And finally, I can testify to you that after over 30 years, you guys got lucky, that you got the right people, that are willing to push forward, and you were able to make the thing happen. And you can see what's happening in Madeira. It take a leadership, it take a mayor, it take Commissioner, and it take all the staff. So, you got this formula today that making your city move forward. Just hang on to it. The momentum is on your side. Negativeness is not going to move the city forward, only positive people is going to make it forward. So, I pledged to all these residents, and asked them, do not stop this momentum that you have. You have a good thing going, stand behind it, and keep moving forward, and thank you for all what you do for Pinellas County, for our beaches.
Mr. Mayor, hang on. J.J. You know, I've known you for a while, Mr. Mayor, and, and J.J., I've, I've got to thank you. You opened up a lot of doors for me, knowing you and working with you, I mean, you've made it to where I've had accessibility to the governor, talking to him about appropriations for the city of Madeira Beach, not only Pinellas County, working within Pinellas County, congressmen, or state representatives. Like I said, you're involved with leadership, and I want to thank you for the introductions you've given to me, to be able to move our city forward. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Matter of fact, we have the governor coming in, he'll be in Treasure Island on
Tomorrow, Thursday.
March 9. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to make public comment? Okay, closing public comment, and moving to the consent agenda. I guess we'll do the consent agenda on two different motions. The first one will be authorization to execute the amendment to grant agreement between the State of Florida, Department of Economic Opportunity, and the city of Madeira Beach. Mr. City Manager, before I entertain that motion, would you like to go ahead and give us a little update, because it's probably needs some explaining?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and instead of me stepping on myself, I'm going to give it to the right guy. Vince, if you can just walk them through a quick synopsis, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, this is related to the state appropriation that the city received for fiscal year 2017. The city has previously authorized expenditures for lighting improvements in John's Pass. There was additional funding available through the state appropriation, and with those funds, this request is to authorize expenditures for additional lighting fixtures that were not included in the first proposal. So, the amount for your consideration is $106,000, and again, this would fall within the limits of the state appropriation funding.
This time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to authorize to execute amendment to grant agreement between the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunities and the city of Madeira Beach.
Second. I have a motion and a second. And, Mr. Broody, this is one of those things I want to, that you, those things that you've kind of helped me to meet people. You know, we worked with this on Senator Brandis and with Representative Kathleen Peters, and this was one, when it went to the budget, having a chance to go ahead and make a phone call and talk to the governor to get this $329,000 for these appropriations. It's been outstanding, and just to let everybody know, the city manager and myself, we're just in Tallahassee last week, and I spoke in front of the Senate Appropriations for the city of Madeira Beach to get a half a million dollars, which I believe Ms. Brown brought up, for new LED lights. And it would seem like it was very well received, and I know that I have a chance tomorrow to get to talk to her, excuse me, on Thursday, to talk to the governor, to, hopefully, to make sure this is kept into the budget. So, once again, that's how government's supposed to work, guys. We're supposed to be out there bringing these appropriations back to the city. And, like I said, J.J., thank you very much for the help that you've given me to know these people. And, Mr. City Manager, thank you for your work in, in all this, too.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to add to your commentary, I did speak to our lobbyists today. This was the first appropriation that I requested since coming here, and we were lucky enough to receive it in the state budget. But ironically, we had never, as an organization or a municipality, made a request that he thinks in the history of Madeira Beach. So, we are cutting new, new ground with this, but $400,000 last year, and another half a million this year, again, those, enough patting on the back, but we're doing it right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there any further comment? With the bound City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildy?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes, and I guess A goes with number one. This time I'll entertain a motion for the authorization of expenditures to USA Voltage LLC, in the amount of $106,000 for Bullard lighting fixtures. And before that motion's entertained with City Manager, please go ahead and...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, what, what this is going to do is light all of the major palm trees along Village Boulevard and John's Pass, so it should be pretty spectacular. We have a prototype out there now, in front of Delos's Pizza. Dave Maruscano's been working diligently on this. We now have electricity throughout John's Pass for festivals and things of that sort, so this is just one more amenity that frankly, we're, the citizens of Madeira Beach, receive through, through a state appropriation. And I was down there the other night, and, and looked at, at really how dark it does get at night, and not only is it going to be aesthetically pleasing, but it will certainly make it safer, because, let's face it, no one really uses the crosswalks in John's Pass, and so it'll also increase pedestrian safety in John's Pass as well, and I think it'll look really spectacular. The, the prototype that Dave's got down there is, is something to be seen, if you haven't taken attention to it, take a look at it, and then just imagine it on every big palm tree up and down Village Boulevard. Pretty neat.
And the lighting looks a little bit like the lighting on the palm trees we've done on the Belt Boulevard.
Very similar.
Is there any further comments from the Commission?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we authorize expenditure to USA Voltage, in the amount of $106,000 for Bullard lighting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment from the Commission?
No.
Is there any further comment? Bound City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildy?
Yes.
All right. Unfinished business, ordinance 2017-03. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 2017-03, in ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter 110 zoning, Article 5 districts, as to sections 110-154, 110-179, 110-204, 110-229, and 110-259, in Article 6 supplementary district regulations, as to sections 110-596, 110-859, 110-881, 110-882, 110-884, 110-885, and 110-886. To substitute the word special magistrate for board of adjustment, as contained therein, by providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to the extent of such conflict, by providing for severability, and by providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2017-03, by title only, and it does require public hearing.
At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-03.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Mr. City Attorney, do you need to swear, anybody wants to make public comment?
Not on this matter, no. The next ordinance I will.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments from staff?
No, Mr. Mayor, we gave an explanation at the, the last hearing. If there are any questions, we can certainly address that, but this is a housekeeping-type issue. We've been without a board of adjustment for some time, and we've gone to a special magistrate form of government, and we're just cleaning up the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further comment? Bound City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, next, ordinance 2017-04. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, ordinance 2017-04, in ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, rezoning certain real property generally described as 0-150th Avenue, 555-150th Avenue, and 565-150th Avenue, from planned development PD District to planned development PD District, providing for reading by title only, and providing for an effective date thereof. That was a reading of ordinance 2017-04, by title only. This is the second and final reading, and I'd like to go through the process that we're going to go through tonight on this, along with the development agreement, which follows as Agenda Item Number 3. Resort in section 2-9 of the Madeira Beach Code, I am obligated to provide you with a summary of the application. Proposed use is the, the proposal for this is a major change to a previously approved planned development concept plan for a mixed-use project known as Holiday Isles Marina. The revised concept plan includes a maximum of 150 temporary lodging units, 31 condominium units, and a marina. The project will consist of two primary buildings, a hotel and a condominium building, surface parking, including parking under each building, and an expanded marina. Proposed building heights for the project are up to 75 feet, with a maximum of five stories above parking. The standards to be applied to the evidence are set forth in sections 110-391 of the code, as well as 110-393. The burden of proof is the greater weight of the evidence is set forth in section 2-10A. The parties and the order of their presentation are going to be as follows: the applicant, which is MHH Enterprises and CNT Enterprises, then the city, then we have affected parties, John Lepa, William Gay, Sam Baker, Larry Roloffs, and Mr. Miller. Then it would be persons who are not parties. Then it would be rebuttal by the applicant, and the city, and a brief summary by the applicant and the city. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I want to ask to see whether or not any of these affected parties that have filed notices are here tonight. John Lepa? William Gay? Sam Baker? Larry Roloffs? Mr. Miller? Okay, that makes it a little bit easier for you tonight. So, if I could have everybody stand up that wants to testify in this particular matter, raise your right hand and be sworn, sworn under oath. You swear that you're going to, the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, with that, I would ask that we go ahead and let the applicant go ahead and present. My suggestion is, is that we do the same thing as we did before. We combine the reading of ordinance 2017-04 along with a development agreement, so they're not, not everybody is presenting twice. So, if you gather the same information, we'll just need two separate motions, one for the ordinance and one for the development agreement.
We'll do, combine two and three together.
Okay. And Ms. Cole is here on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Katie Cole, with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, 600 Cleveland Street, Suite 800, Clearwater, Florida, representing the applicant, MHH Enterprises and CNT Enterprises. We are here for the second reading for the rezoning to planned development, and the inclusion of a new concept plan, as well as the adoption and approval of a development, excuse me, the approval of a development agreement between the parties to reflect that. Frankly, with the second reading, I wanted to go through some housekeeping items to keep this hearing somewhat abbreviated. The first, I would like to ask the mayor to confirm we can incorporate the record and the evidence presented from the Planning and Zoning Board and the first reading held on February 14, 2017, as to not have to re-present all of that evidence tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd also like to highlight the package. Last week, in, in an attempt to make things easier, we provided the city duplicate copies of the plans that had been previously submitted, so you all had a full set of the application and plans. Inadvertently, I included the wrong traffic study, not the one that had been submitted, but a prior version that was not submitted, and... but a prior version that was not submitted and frankly, reflected the traffic study of the wrong information. It reflected the study of a project that had more information. The application in December, the Planning and Zoning Board, and upon first reading, you did all have the correct traffic study. The staff reviewed the correct staff traffic study. I wanted to bring copies tonight for your reference. I just wanted to highlight that in the package that we provided to the clerk last week, I inadvertently included the wrong version of that, so I will pass these out to the clerk for your...
And Mr. City Attorney, is that fine?
Yes, and I'm, yes, that's fine. She's basically catching the error in the very beginning, which is great for you, so that you are looking at the correct document when you hear that information. So, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that you receive that in evidence along with the other information you already have.
Okay, received and noted.
Thank you. Again, I would like to highlight that the traffic study you're receiving tonight is the same study that was submitted with the application in December, was reviewed by staff in preparation of their staff report, was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board, and was included in your packets or at the city clerk for your review prior to first reading. The package, the study that you reviewed, if you reviewed it or saw it prior to this week's meeting, actually had numbers that were a study that reflected a development of greater intensity than what is planned, and therefore, the traffic is greater than what the study is that I just showed you. So, again, the public has the correct study, it had been included since December, the correct one. The error just occurred last week. So, Mr. Pergolese is here and can speak specifically to that, but his testimony from first reading reflected the study you have in your hands right now, so it's dated December of 2016. With that, I will move on to the development agreement unless there are any questions regarding the planned development rezoning.
Commissioners, are there any questions at this time from Ms. Cole?
No.
Katie, you wanna go over, since we're talking about the ordinance first, you wanna go over the changes in the ordinance?
Certainly, there were three typos in the ordinance that Mr. Trask and I reviewed that was included in your packet. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for that. The first two are in the title of the ordinance, "Providing" and "thereof" are misspelled. And on page 2 of the ordinance, and my version doesn't have this error, so can you highlight? We think it was a conversion to PDF error from Word to PDF.
Well, there's two things that I just wanted to bring to your attention. The last draft ordinance had an effective date that had it effective immediately upon its adoption. And there has been some language added in Section 4 that addresses that particular issue, similar to the ordinance that was adopted for the Karnes Project. This particular ordinance is not gonna go into effect until 31 days after the rendition, in other words, tonight. And if you look at it, it specifically references the prior development agreement, and the synopsis of this is basically that, look, if someone challenges this, then the prior approvals are gonna take precedent over these that you're approving tonight. And so, there's a specific reference to the old ordinance that was adopted, 2016-18, and the old development agreement. So this is very, very similar to what you did in the Karnes Project, and I wanted just to let you know that that change had been made, and so the public knows.
So, challenged, we go from the 9 Plan back to the 4 Plan, the same as...
If it's challenged, it's gonna go back to the...
I wanna make sure it's very transparent.
Right, it's gonna go back to the bigger project that was first approved last year. So this is beneficial to the city, that it's a smaller project, but the developer is not giving up any rights if, in fact, this is challenged.
Understood.
Okay, I'm sorry, Katie, I just wanna make sure that since we were, before we moved to the development agreement, we talked about the ordinance.
No, I'm glad you did. I had the ordinance with your name by it. Thank you. With that, we can move on to the development agreement. The development agreement that was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board is substantially the same as what you have. We had requested if there were any changes, we could incorporate them. There are two minor changes from what the planning board heard in January, and that is that in the addition of recital 8, which clarifies that the city did receive the application, review it, and it included all the relevant information as provided for in the code, as well as the inclusion of the effective date language that Mr. Trask just reviewed that was also included in the ordinance, and that is in Section 3 on Page 5 of the agreement. Finally, if upon second reading, the planned development concept plan is approved as associated with the PD rezoning, that plan will be included as Exhibit B into the development agreement. I do have reduced-size copies of Exhibit B that were provided to the cities to have. It's the same as the large copies that you have, but this is what would be Exhibit B, so you can slip that in. In the form that you have now, it just says to insert the plan as approved for the PD in consideration of that. Section 86-145 of your code require, provides for the required information in the development agreement, which corresponds to the requirements in Florida Statute 163. A legal description of the land is in Recital 1, the duration of the agreement in Section 4, the development use is permitted in Recital 10, the description of public facilities is in Section 10, a description of all local development permits in Section 11, a finding that the development was permitted and is proposed is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations is found in Recital 9. A description of any conditions, terms, restrictions, or other requirements determined necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens specifically found in Recital 11 with the conditions of approval. A statement indicating that the failure of the agreement to address particular permits shall not relieve the developer of all other obligations is found in Section 6, and additional information as necessary is throughout the agreement. There is not a description of reservations or dedications of land for public purposes with the exception of the specific transportation improvement requirements that are included in the development agreement that we did want to review. Additionally, your code provides that a development agreement may provide the entire development or any phase thereof be convinced or completed within a specific period of time. In Recital 10, the conditions, Section 4 and Section 9, each address the proposed options for phasing of this project and specifically require that each phase of the project must independently comply with the parking and FAR requirements of the code. Sorry, this is all very dry and much housekeeping tonight, but I wanna be sure that we get you all of the information that you need. So with that, I think that the biggest issue in the development agreement deals with the These are included as an exhibit to your agreement. And it's actually this exhibit that is included in the development agreement that will obligate the off-site developer to construct the off-site improvements in conjunction with Phase 1 of the project in the event it's constructed in phases. So as we discussed at first reading relative to the planned development approval, the off-site improvements require a pedestrian walkway under the bridge that connects to the existing walkway on the other side of 150th. It requires the extension of the turning lane in 150th and the relocation slightly to the east of the marina entry, which is required by DOT in combination with the extended left turn lane. So I did wanna highlight these areas as they are off-site improvements that will be constructed on city property in conjunction with, or and DOT right-of-way, excuse me, in conjunction with the approval and the appropriate DOT permits. The development agreement states that the city and the developer will be the co-applicants for these improvements and that the developer will seek those approvals within a year of the development agreement becoming effective. If you have any specific questions about the off-site improvements, Robert Pergolese with Gulf Coast Consulting is here tonight, and he is a traffic planner and conducted the traffic study and has been involved with the conversations with DOT and can speak specifically to that. Also of interest, I note to the residents, is the potential of a stoplight being constructed on 150th that is not specifically proximate to this project. And in conversations with FDOT, it became apparent that this project would not trigger any of the requirements for a stoplight, and in fact, because of the location of this project relative to many of the residents' desired location of a stoplight, this project likely would not include or have any impact on that. However, Mr. Holton has obligated himself as part of this agreement in Section 9 to cooperate with both the city and Mr. Karnes, the other developer who is proposing the Madeira Town Center project, to work together with staff and FDOT to actively seek approval of that light if warranted by DOT. So that language was specifically requested by the condominium residents and included in this agreement. With that, unless there are specific questions, I'll let Mr. Healy and Mr. Trask follow up with any other, but we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and the opportunity to respond to any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Cole?
I do not, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, Dave Healy with Calvin Giordano Associates, who have reviewed the project in concert with and on behalf of your city staff. Just two or three brief points in summary. First, to confirm the minor corrections to the application materials that Ms. Cole cited. There were three or four items that we had noted, the reference to the ordinance corrections on Exhibit B to the application, two corrections that were made on Page 2 and Page 4 to confirm for the record that we did review the correct traffic analysis as submitted in December and the addendum supplied on January 5. Lastly, there was a minor change to the plan on Sheet 4 with reference to the extended left turn lane that had been mislabeled. We've noted those corrections and they are, they have been made and are in front of you in their correct form tonight. Second, in, as set forth in detail in the staff agenda report, prepared by Mr. Sernum, my associate, we reviewed the application for rezoning, the accompanying PD plan, and the development agreement, and I would make three summary observations about that application that's in front of you. First, that the submission materials that accompany the application for rezoning, the accompanying plan, and the corresponding development agreement contain all the applicable relevant information and are complete and sufficient for the matters before the commission. Secondly, with respect to the review criteria, requests for rezoning and its accompanying plan are consistent with the requisite criteria specifically with the city's comprehensive plan. They are consistent with and further the Town Center Special Area Plan, and lastly, are consistent with the specific requirements of the land development regulations. City Attorney has referenced in particular the sections that are set forth in considerable detail in our staff report. I referenced those as set forth in Section 110-391, Items 1 through 5, as found on Pages 5 through 7 of our staff report, and I can go into any of those in detail if the Commission has questions. And then subsequently, Section 110-393, Pages 7 through 11, Items 1 through 12, and Pages 11 through 14 of our staff report, Items 1 through 11. The sum and substance of that review and analysis is that they do comport and comply with your requirements of both the plan and the code. Similarly, the development agreement is consistent with the requirements of state law, Chapter 163 and Chapter 86, Article 4 of your Code of Ordinances with respect to the development agreement, inclusive of the two changes noted by Ms. Cole in her presentation. Having said that, the reference in the staff report is made to the previous hearing by the Planning and Zoning Board, who recommended approval of the rezoning, PD plan, and the development agreement to you, and the staff recommendation and conclusion is that based on this analysis, we recommend approval of Ordinance 2017-04 to rezone the subject property to PD Plan Development in concert with the accompanying concept plan and subject to the corresponding and subsequently to be considered development agreement that I guess is on the table at the same time. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I would ask the Commission to accept the staff report to be filed as part of the record and be happy to answer any questions you have of me as your staff.
So submitted, is there any questions from the Commission for Mr. Healy?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Healy, thank you very much for your due diligence. Mr. City Attorney?
I just wanna make sure that you've accepted the staff report and evidence.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so now that that presentation has been made, if there are no questions of that, it's time for the public to have the opportunity to speak on the agenda item. Since the affected parties or affected persons are not here in the audience, it would go right to the public.
All right, I'll start on the left. Ms. Palladino?
Hi, my name's Helen Palladino. I live at 13319 Boca Seega Avenue here in beautiful Madeira Beach, and I speak in support of the rezoning and the approval of this development agreement. I drive by this big empty lot, the old Lever Rocks property, every day, and I've done it for years, and it almost breaks my heart that it is such beautiful property that really needs to show our city off, right there at the gateway. In my opinion, we can't build on that property fast enough. I welcome the hotel, the marina, another destination to go to by boat, the walkway under the bridge is pretty cool, I like that idea. I think the concessions made by Mr. Holton and his team show a real good faith in building and development that kinda goes with the flavor of our city, and I very much welcome this development, and I hope you'll vote it in. Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Everett, 15458, First Street East. I just wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, I thank Mr. Holton for hanging in there. I tell ya, I've been waiting for some shovels to go on the ground over there for over a year now, and the fact that they've come back with a significantly scaled-down development, I think they have more than listened to the folks that were concerned about the size and scale of the development. But I'd like to point out a comment that the city attorney made, and this is actually true, it's my understanding it's true for both developments, that they do have the option to go back to the original developments if these are challenged. So I would just say to those that were not in favor of the original developments that they don't look a gift horse in the mouth, and that they allow the developers to move forward with their two projects. I mean, they're significantly scaled down from what was originally proposed, and I didn't hear anybody complaining about traffic in John's Pass when it was announced that they have over two and a half million visitors a year down there. What are we gonna do, close John's Pass because of the traffic? I don't think so. Too much of an economic impact on our city, too much favorable press that we receive from around the country. I mean, Madeira Beach is on the map, and this is a way for us to really cement the legacy of our town and to bring some much-needed hotel rooms, which we sorely need. I mean, the Marriott is sold out all the time. I mean, 90 rooms, adding 90 rooms is nothing. I mean, we lost the Holiday Inn out here at the beach. We severely and sorely need some hotel rooms to support the activities that Mr. Karnes talked about, as far as coming to Rock Park, all the baseball tournaments, the softball tournaments, where are these people gonna stay? We need the hotel rooms to accommodate these folks. So I would ask that you move this forward. Thank you.
Mr. Everett?
Mr. Mayor, to dovetail off of what Mr. Everett said, and he was the chairman of the planning permission at the time, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this was introduced in front of your committee December of 2015, if I'm... I think this was introduced in front of your committee December of 2015, if I'm correct?
Yeah, we're still railroading.
Okay, understood. So yeah, so I heard that again yesterday, that we're, you know, jamming this down the citizen's throat. And Mayor, I think you made a good comment. We really started talking about this in 2001. That's 11 years before I arrived. And then you did it again in 2009. And then we did it again in 2014 with no one showing up to several public meetings and public hearings. So if 15 or 16, I'm not good at math, but I think that's about 15 or 16 months, if that's railroading the job through, I think, years, I'm sorry, years. You know, I think Mr. Holton and Mr. Carnes would respectfully disagree. So I think we've done our due diligence. The developers have been fantastic. The board's been fantastic. Everybody's been patient, but at a certain point here, enough is enough and it's time to move on. And I agree with what Mr. Everett said. If you challenge these, they can go back to the original plan and then we get something that, you know, bigger that they're not in favor of. And so it's just time to move forward so we can get to work on these projects.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Doug, I'm working the left side room. Did you want to, did you, did you end up to speak?
I'm Doug Izzo with the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce. I'll be brief, but thank you for letting me speak tonight. I just want to say that the chamber is in favor of this. You know, one thing we know is that tourism is good right now and numbers keep increasing. But you know what we're having a shortage of is places to keep these people. So, you know, anything that will increase our tax base and really beautify the entrance of our city, we are in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Mr. Robert?
Captain Mark Hubbard, Hubbard's Marina, 170 John's Pass Boardwalk. This property development's going to be so good for Madeira Beach. Obviously, the history of Madeira Beach has changed over the last 20 years. That property has housed a lot of different things. With the redevelopment and the economic development of that area, it's going to be good for the citizens, good for the economy, good for the working people in this area. And it's going to be the first thing people see when they go over that bridge. It's going to be a real feather in our cap and it's going to tie in North Madeira Beach to South Madeira Beach. Look at John's Pass Village as it developed. It took years to come around to what it is today. And here, Mr. Holton's willing to put it all together in one fell swoop and make an absolutely beautiful development that's going to help the citizens and be a great attraction as well as meet a lot of the needs of the hotel rooms and employment for the area. So I am totally for it. I solely suggest that y'all vote yes and do what we have to do to make this development come to fruition. Thank you.
Dominic?
My name is Dominic Bianchi. I live at 15400 Gulf Boulevard. I'll keep it brief. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm a new citizen in Madeira Beach. I've been here for less than six months and, you know, I guess I plan on staying here. And as, you know, the next generation of citizens in this town, I think projects like this are fantastic. I think they, you know, help create jobs and stimulate our economy and they help move Madeira forward. So really, I think overall it's a fantastic thing and I hope you guys all vote yes. Appreciate it and thank you for your time.
And Dominic, let me say how excited I am to see somebody young. I mean, and if you look, and it's not that, I'm sorry, guys, sorry. Wow, that was bad. This election time to say that. But I want to say, you know what, y'all just, I mean, think about it, the things we're doing, it's not only for us, but it is for the next generation. And so to see you here tonight is very exciting. Thank you. Sorry, guys. I'm the one that's old. Terry, please bury me now. All right, I'm sorry. Ginger, behave yourself. The deputies are still here. Yeah, thanks. Did anybody else want to make comment? Go ahead, Ginger, and then I'll go ahead.
Ginger Tolliver, 81, adopted, give that all over again, 814 Bay Point Drive. I just have to tell you that somebody said, "There goes your vote." That's not true. I've told you that I'm so proud of everything that this whole city council has done and I encourage you to vote yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Beggins, good to see you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Jim Beggins. I'm an old generation. I don't know how I got this way.
I'm not going to live this one down, am I? I'm done.
I live at 15366 Gulf Boulevard in a beautiful town home built by Bob Lyons. It's hard for a real estate broker to take a position on controversial issues because it costs us business. But I've been here for quite a while. My daily job is to talk to residents in Madeira Beach and the other towns along here on why their properties are not worth as much as they are in other cities. So there's 16 little beach towns up and down the beaches. I've lived in a lot of them. I've been here since 2001 and I've heard Madeira Beach called the slum of the beaches with the potential to be the best of the 16 towns that we have. And I can see that happening, especially with the developments that have coming in. I think that we're lucky to have developers with the creativity and concern for our citizens to mediate the best lifestyle for everyone. I mean, people could have come in here and built whatever they wanted with, along the guidelines that we had set up. And these guys have taken profit away for the citizens here. And it's great. This is such a friendly little town when it's friendly, but it's a tough one when it's not. And I think we should all pull together and make these developments happen. So thank you.
Mr. King?
Good evening again, Mayor, Commission staff. Missy Hahn with the Treasure Island, Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce. And we are the ones who take the calls for where should we stay, the visitors come to town. And it is getting harder and harder to find places to put these people. And we certainly don't want to send them to the other coast. So for that reason, the chamber is certainly behind these developments and it'll be nice to see this happening and a great way to, for the visitors to come and see the jewel of the beaches. So please put your vote yes behind this. Thank you.
Mr. Hitterman?
Good evening, Board. My name is Dave Hitterman. I live at 423150th Avenue, Snug Harbor, right in the middle of the construction. I would love nothing more to see something happen. I've lived here since '79. Been over that bridge numerous times. Nothing's changed. Gene's Lobster House was there, then Lever Rocks, now an empty lot. Berry Loft Property, still there. Mr. Carnes has bought it. The development is great. I want to see it. I'm a business owner and I welcome all the traffic we can get. Please vote yes.
Anybody else would like to speak? First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Holton and Mr. Carnes. I know that I've had some chances to talk to some representatives of the House and the Senate on trying to pull through to get the traffic light done, so I appreciate y'all's help on that. As it is not, DOT's saying it's not needed, I think in the future we will need to see it, so I think if we can get that moved forward, but I appreciate y'all's help on that. I appreciate y'all working with the residents, working with concerned citizens, working with commission and staff to make this move forward. Because, guys, when I hear out there, look, I've done a lot of things with the tourist board with Pinellas County. We're at plus 94 on occupancy ratings. We need heads in beds. We need these rooms. You know, listening to the real estate, I know, and I don't think I'm preaching to the choir on that one. I mean, we had the highest property value increase this year in Pinellas County, almost, what, 9%? Proper, I think we were right at that 9% the highest.
1.9, I believe.
Yeah. And I heard from, you know, Realtors, I used to hear, you know, they used to steer people away from Madeira Beach. Now they can't find enough to sell in Madeira Beach. So, guys, we've got a lot to be proud of. We really have done a lot with our city. And I'm telling you, if I'm the mayor or not the mayor, guys, we've done a lot in six years and I want to thank you. Thank you very much and thank you to the developers, the work to help make this move forward. Mr. Mayor, I know you're all about statistics. I just, Doug Andrews is phoning it in tonight because he's got a bad back. We had that NCAA tournament here just a couple of weekends ago. 960 hotel rooms with all those teams, not one in Madeira Beach.
So, Mr. Mayor, at this time, it'd be the time for rebuttal by the applicant and if none, then summary by both the applicant and the city, if there are any. You have anything else you want to add, Katie? No?
No rebuttal. Just thank you for your time. As Mr. Crawford indicated, this process began two years ago, pretty much with these two developments. And we appreciate the patience and working with the staff and the residents to bring this forward. And based on the competent substantial evidence that was presented in the application, expert testimony by your staff and the applicant's team at first reading, as it's been incorporated by reference, we would respectfully request your approval of the planned development as well as approval of entering into the development agreement before tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Healy advised me that he didn't have any additional summary. He is here to answer questions if you have any. And if not, Mr. Mayor, it'd be time to entertain a motion for the adoption of the ordinance followed by a motion to entertain adoption of the approval of the development agreement.
All right, it's time I'll entertain a motion for to adopt Ordinance 2017-04.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that this commission pass ordinance 2017-04 on second and final reading.
Second. I have a motion in second. Is there any further comments from staff?
Staff recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments from the commission? Any further comments from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the development agreement for the Holiday Isles project.
I'll make the motion for the second.
Sorry. Do you have any question?
I have a motion in second. And Mr. City Attorney, just for the record, should I have you read that by title only before we?
There is no title for that development agreement. But I just want to make sure that I heard the motion correctly. The motion was to approve?
Yes.
Okay. And then that was seconded by?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any further comments from staff?
Staff recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments from the commission? Any further comments from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right. New business, none, reports and correspondence. Do you think commissioners have any reports or correspondence?
I'd just like to make a comment. We've got the carnival coming. And it's going to be the 16th, 17th, 18th and 19th, I believe. Yes. And it's going to be great and we'll get you your Ferris wheel again, Reese, okay?
Thank you. And Reese, thank you for your Ferris wheel opportunity out there and thank you once again for everybody coming out. And like I said, no matter what happens on Tuesday, it's been an honor being the mayor of the city of Madeira Beach for the last six years. And like I said, guys, you've got a great commission, you've got great staff. We've moved the city forward and I proudly have served the city in one way or the other the last 10 years between being an elected official or being the planning commission. And please get out on March 14th and please vote. Mr. City Attorney?
I've got nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, just that since my impending doom has been announced, if it goes one way or the other, I just wish you all luck on Tuesday and we'll see how we're doing there.
Madam City Clerk?
Again, I wish you all luck on Tuesday as well and thank you again for giving me this honor and privileges serving as your city clerk.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And with that, we are adjourned at 8:27 PM.
Thanks, Dave. Good job, ladies.